I guess here we go. Good morning and welcome to Tuesday, April 20th, 8:30 a.m., Finance and Physical Resources Committee for Kent County. We have a hybrid meeting. We have part in person and part virtual pursuant to the MCL 15.263A1B and the Kent County Board of Commissioners Resolution from 3/25/2132. All right, with that, we have public comment available at publiccomment@kentcountymi.gov. We have public comment available in person. So I will call the meeting to order and the first thing we will do is take roll. Pam, would you please call the roll and have everyone state your location when you are called?
Sure. Commissioner Antor.
Township.
And your location?
Sparta Township.
Thank you. Commissioner Breeby.
I'm here, Grand Rapids, Kent County, Michigan.
Commissioner Bukowski.
I'm present on a Shenabe land known as Comstock Park, Michigan.
Commissioner Green.
Here, City of Grand Rapids, Kent County.
Commissioner Morgan.
Here, Cortland Township.
Commissioner Sparks. Commissioner Womack.
Here, Grand Rapids, Michigan.
Commissioner Wooden.
Here in Grand Rapids, Michigan. And forgive me Pam, but I don't know if you heard Commissioner Sparks marked herself present as well.
Oh, okay, I missed that. Commissioner Sparks.
I am here, can you hear me?
Yes, I can hear you, thank you.
Thank you.
And can you state your location, Commissioner Sparks?
I am in Kentwood, Michigan, Kent County.
Thank you. Chair Jones.
Here, Grand Rapids, Michigan, Kent County.
All members are present.
All right, we will start with public comments. We can do public comment both in person and public comment at publiccomment@kentcountymi.gov. So we will open public comment. State your name and your address if you have any public comment for the Finance and Physical Resources Committee this morning.
There are no messages in the inbox and there are no hands raised in the chat.
All right, I will close public comment and that will bring us to the consent agenda. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Moved by Breeby.
Support by Sparks.
All right.
Support by Sparks.
Supported. Do we have questions, comments, or discussion on the consent agenda? All right, seeing none, Pam, would you please call the roll to pass the consent agenda?
Sure. Commissioner Antor.
Yes.
Commissioner Breeby.
Yes.
Commissioner Bukowski.
Yes.
Commissioner Green.
Yes.
Commissioner Morgan.
Yes.
Commissioner Sparks.
Yes.
Commissioner Womack.
Yes.
Commissioner Wooden.
Yes.
Chair Jones.
Yes.
That motion passes.
Thank you, that brings us to item three from the Bureau of Equalization. We have the 2021 Equalization Report. We have our Assistant Administrator Jenny with us. Jenny, would you please read the action request?
Yes, thank you. The action requested is to recommend to the Board of Commissioners to adopt the 2021 Equalization Report. The Bureau of Equalization has completed its review of the 2021 Assessment Roles of the 21 Townships and nine cities of Kent County. The Bureau of Equalization recommends adoption of the state equalized equalization value, or SEV, of the real and personal property in the total combined amount of $34.1 billion. This is an increase of 6.85% over the 2021 SEV of $31.9 billion. The total state taxable value, or STV, of the real and personal property is $26.6 billion, an increase of 4.49% over the 2020 STV of $25.4 billion. The equalized values have been prepared in accordance with MCL 211.34, as amended, and in time to be submitted to the State Tax Commission by the required deadline of May 3rd, 2021. This is proposed to go to the Board on April 22nd.
Is there a motion to approve?
Moved by Breeby.
Support by Green.
Okay, moved and supported, we'll take questions, comments, and discussion. I see that I am viewing Matthew Wolford's screen. Matthew, did you want to take a few minutes and make some comments and then we can take additional questions and comments?
Be happy to, Commissioner. Can everyone hear me okay?
We can.
Excellent.
It's almost like this year.
Be happy to answer any direct questions that you may have. I am prepared to just give a brief overview if you desire.
Go ahead.
Okay. Thank you very much. It's a pleasure to be here this morning. I know there are several new commissioners, so I thought I would just take just a very few moments to give a brief overview of the equalization report and why it's before you today. My name is Matt Wolford, I'm the Director of Equalization. I work with 14 property tax and mapping professionals to deliver this report to you on an annual basis. Our job is to make sure that the changes in market conditions are accurately reflected and that the assessors have adjusted their assessed values in accordance with the General Property Tax Act. To do this, our department does many things. It is responsible for assisting the assessors in inventorying and listing all of the property in Kent County. We do that through our Property Description and Mapping Department. So we make sure that all of the parcels fit together, there's no gaps and no overlaps, so that all of the land that is subject to the property tax is subject to the property tax and that there's no double pack fashion. So we are responsible for making sure that the underlying integrity of the maps are there upon which the entire property tax system is based. We also work through our Appraisal Division to deliver to you this core mandated function of the equalization report. And this is one of two mandated reports that the County Board of Commissioners is responsible for on an annual basis. The equalization report, which is a summary of the values that you see before you right now, is the one that validates all of the assessed values, which at our level, we make county equalized values, and that states that the Board of Commissioners through its equalization department has reviewed all of the assessments and is approved of them as to form, make sure that they're fair and equitable, and that the assessors have met all of the targets as set by the changing market conditions. That happens here in April, is finalized by the Board, and then that goes to the state and then that becomes the state equalization, state equalized value in May of each year. The second report that we give to the Board of Commissioners and the Board of Commissioners is responsible for is the apportionment report, and that comes later in October, and that validates the property tax rate requests from the various taxing authorities in Kent County to make sure that that rate that is being requested is lawful and complies with all of the provisions of the Constitution and the Headley Amendment. So your equalization department represents you in both sides of the tax equation. We represent you on the valuation side and also on the rate side. So the way that we equalize is we do that through a combination of studying all of the deeds that come through the Register of Deeds, and we enter in all of those sales and we sort of sort the laundry, if you will. We sort all of the good sales, which are valid for property tax purposes, and we sort all of the sales that are not considered valid for property tax purposes. And we analyze all of those sales, and there's anywhere between 25,000 and 30,000 documents that come through the Register of Deeds office on an annual basis. The other way that we project true cash value is through the use of our appraisal studies, and we have a staff of professional appraisers that go out and they do appraisals on agricultural, commercial, and industrial properties. We have to do appraisals because there's not always enough sales data to perform a sales analysis ratio study, so we have to augment our practices, and every equalization department does this throughout the state with a combination of sales and appraisal studies. So we measure those market changes and then we monitor those market conditions, and we provide the assessors with a target that they have to meet then in order to raise or lower assessments, as the case may be, in order to achieve 50% of the cash value, which is under our property tax system, is the statutory level, which property should be assessed at for property tax purposes. So we're now just completing the process where we have received all of the databases in from the local units for the March border review. We've analyzed them as to form and accuracy, and happy to report that all of the local units are in compliance. So we do not have to impose, which is the one power of the equalization department, is to impose an equalization factor if there was a failing government unit that didn't meet those targets. It's where the term "equalization" comes from. So whether you're in Spencer Township or downtown Grand Rapids, our role as the County Board through the equalization department is to make sure that regardless of the local assessor, that everyone is treated fair and equitable because we all pay the same county taxes. So that's the role that the Board plays, that's the role that the equalization plays on your behalf. And so what I'll do now is I will turn my attention. Jenny provided sort of the overview in the action request. This year, our... And just to confirm on your screen, are you just seeing the singular page with the pie charts?
Yep. Yes.
Okay, thank you. So what I'd want to do is just talk a little bit about overall, our state equalized value went up from $31.9 billion to just over $34 billion. And within each of those property classes, we had agriculture was going up 3.5 in state equalized value, they went up just over 2% in taxable value, commercial went up just shy of 6%, industrial actually increased 10%, residential went up 7.3%, and personal property increased 1.2% on the state equalized value side. As you can see from the here, the residential constitutes the largest portion of our property. Commercial is second, followed by industrial and then agricultural, which is small in value but very high in acreage. But sometimes people are surprised to find out just within relation, the overall value of the agricultural class in relation to the total. The 2021 personal taxable, you can see that there's this mixture of commercial, industrial, and utility. Commercial has been subject to, or I'm sorry, industrial has been subject to exemptions with personal property reform. That contribution of industrial personally, personally used to be pretty similar with industrial receiving the exemptions under personal property tax reform, that percentage has decreased over the last several years. This graph here is just a visual depiction of the growth in the state equalized value and the ratio of taxable value to state equalized value over time. Currently, our ratio of taxable value to state equalized value has reached its widest point than it has been since the inception of proposal A back in 1994. And right now taxable value, there is a gap where it only represents 77.8%, which is depicted in this bottom bar here, this $26.5 billion in relation to the SEV of 34. What that gap is, is that you can have several years of inflationary increases and still not catch up to the SEV. This is a percentage change in SEV and taxable value, and this just sort of shows you where kind of the growth is happening on a percentage basis in rank order. So I highlighted here Wyoming, you can see Wyoming sort of led the county in terms of percentage increase, right? So one of the things with today's housing market that we're noticing is that price appreciation in the residential classes has been extraordinary, and that's due to several factors. There's been record low inventory, you know, millennial boom, delayed household formation, and people coming in, the pandemic has sort of been interesting in that while we're going through a once-in-a-century health event, the underlying scarcity and demographics have contributed to a somewhat counterintuitive boom in real estate values across the board. In addition, high costs of construction, the fact that we're a growing region, and that West Michigan is just a sort of a center of economic gravity for the western half of the state are all contributing to price appreciation across the board in residential. I highlight Wyoming here simply because Wyoming has more homes on average that are on the lower end of the home affordability spectrum, and their price appreciation has been some of the highest. So I thought that was just something to note with regard to that. This chart here was added at Commissioner Bukowski's request a few years back. This shows the SEV and the taxable value per capita. It just tries to superimpose sort of the concept of the taxable value on a per capita basis. Cascade is highest at $75,000 per capita in taxable value, and Cedar Springs is at the lowest. Overall countywide, our taxable value per capita amongst, I think these are 2019 population figures, is around $40,000 per capita, and this sort of shows the interrelationship between population and value. What follows is a series of comparative tables that I will leave for you to peruse in your packet if you desire. I think this would be an appropriate time for me to maybe pause and be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Commissioner Bukowski?
Thank you, Chair. I mean, first and foremost, thank you, Matt, for your annual presentation of your team's awesome work. I mean, as you noted, there's a lot of parcels that you all have to track in every corner of the county, and again, just fantastic work overall to bring this to us. And then thank you for continuing to provide that per capita, because that, I mean, from my perspective, that's what really shows the, how to say it, you know, the ability of a community to raise its own resources, to provide services for its residents, where the one chart showed Wyoming had, you know, led the county in growth, the city of Wyoming is on the lower end of per capita value. So I'll leave my comments there for today. So I mean, I simply wanted to say thank you for the hard work. And then I guess just a quick question, Chair. The, when do we see how all these charts impact our 2021, 2022 budgets in the sense of that, the chart that Matt provides that shows the difference between equalized value and taxable value, you know, and that gap continues to widen, however, we still see an increase on net revenue from our property taxes? And when do we start seeing those numbers?
I think Jeff could best respond to that if he's available to comment.
Sure, good morning, Commissioners. So yeah, we, obviously there's a gap between taxable and SEV, however, there's also, I guess, a generic overall increase in taxable value by the rate of inflation. So you see that each and every year in the budget with new construction adding to SEV, and Matt probably has the numbers, I don't think I have them right in front of me here. I believe we had a $2.1 billion increase in SEV, but a $1.1 billion increase in taxable. So still a significant increase in the taxable piece that adds to our revenue every year. And Matt, please correct me if I'm wrong on those quotes.
No, you're correct, Jeff. And one of the things that we do also, obviously, is we have to factor in the Headley impact. And I know that originally Fiscal Services was hoping that we could get the Headley component on this meeting. We did go, that'll be coming later in May, however, we did complete our review, and we will be getting a Headley rollback this year, our rollback correction is .9907. However, keeping in mind that with the growth in taxable value, we're still going to get, you know, my quick calculations, we'll still receive a growth of about $5 million in property taxes overall, even though the Headley rollback will be imposed on that growth. So the interplay there is that the overall growth overtakes the reduction in the Headley amendment. So I hope that answers your question, Commissioner.
I mean, it does. Again, it's like I said, you know, it's your team tracking all this stuff and how the different laws impact it, because, you know, the proverbial rubber hits the road when people get their tax bills, and then the services were able to provide for that investment. So again, thank you for all your hard work and thank you for answering the question.
Okay, anyone else?
I guess just...
Go ahead. Matt, did you have more comments?
Yeah, I was just gonna say, sometimes I just try to put the context in terms of the overall $2.1 billion in increase. The city of Grand Rapids is worth just over a billion, it's worth a billion, 54 million. So just to kind of give you an envision, it would be like if you took a copy of East Grand Rapids twice. So if you added two East Grand Rapids, that would be the growth in the property tax value countywide when you extrapolate that out. And then as a corollary, right, the taxable value went up $1.1 billion. So that's kind of like the equivalent of adding East Grand Rapids one time. So that kind of gives you just sort of a geospatial sort of snapshot in terms of when you take the value and disperse it across the entire county, it can be sort of visualized by just taking a look at East Grand Rapids. You add East Grand Rapids one time, you get the taxable value, you add it twice, that was the growth in the SEV.
Okay, do we have any other questions?
I don't see any hands raised in the chat.
All right, let's go ahead and take a roll call vote to pass agenda item number three, Pam.
Commissioner Antor.
Yes.
Commissioner Breeby.
Yes.
Commissioner Bukowski.
Yes.
Commissioner Green.
Yes.
Commissioner Morgan.
Yes.
Commissioner Sparks.
Yes.
Commissioner Womack.
Yes.
Commissioner Wooden.
Yes.
Chair Jones.
Yes.
That motion passes.
Right, that will bring us to item number four from the Health Department. Jenny, would you please cover the action request?
Yes. The action requested is to recommend to the Board of Commissioners to approve the Strong Beginnings contract with Spectrum Health for the 2021-22. Accept and appropriate $164,332 to the 2021-22 Health Fund Budget, and to authorize the Board Chair or designee to execute the grant agreement, approve extensions, amendments, and increases to the grant appropriation, not to exceed 15% of the original award. The Health Department has received $164,000 in funding from Spectrum Health to continue funding the existing HRSA Strong Beginnings Program partnership by funding Healthy Start Initiative, eliminating racial/ethnic disparities. Strong Beginnings is a home visiting program that uses community health workers to work alongside nurses and social workers in the maternal and infant health program to provide services that do not require the skill or expertise of a nurse or social worker. The Strong Beginnings Program goals are to improve birth outcomes and decrease the rate of infant mortality, to reduce the barriers to care for pregnant women, infants, and toddlers through community outreach, case management, and education, to improve care for pregnant women through improved screening and coordination, and to engage the community to advocate for culturally competent care. The grant period is April 1, 2021, to March 31, 2022. Assistant Corporate Counsel has reviewed and approved all documents as to form.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve?
Moved by Breeby.
And support?
Support by Green.
Okay, questions, comments, and discussion? All right, we don't see any questions. Pam, would you please call the roll to pass agenda item number four?
Sure. Commissioner Antor.
Yes.
Commissioner Breeby.
Yes.
Commissioner Bukowski. Commissioner Green.
Yes.
Commissioner Morgan.
Yes.
Commissioner Sparks. Commissioner Womack.
Yes.
Commissioner Wooden.
Yes.
Chair Jones.
Yes.
That motion passes.
That brings us to item number five from Fiscal Services. Jenny, would you please read the action request?
The action requested is to recommend to the Board of Commissioners to appropriate $374,220 to the 2021 Coronavirus Relief Fund budget for payment processing and dispersment of approved CERA Emergency Assistance Awards under an agreement with the Heart of West Michigan United Way as part of the COVID Emergency Rental Assistance Program through December 31, 2021. The COVID Emergency Rental Assistance Grant Program will assist eligible households who are in rentals and experiencing difficulty making timely payments of rent and utilities due to the pandemic. CERA is administered by the Michigan State Housing Development Authority. The county's Fiscal Services Department will process the payment and dispersment of approved CERA Emergency Assistance Awards. This will be done under a separate agreement with the United Way. Using the county's existing cost allocation formula for calculating indirect costs associated with particular administrative activities, the cost to process a CERA payment will be $11.34. The Heart of West Michigan United Way will pay the county $11.34 per payment issued by the county. 33,000 payments are estimated to be made, which would result in revenue of $374,220. The appropriation will be utilized to reimburse Fiscal Services in the county for the indirect costs resulting from the payment processing related to the CERA program. Corporate Counsel reviewed and approved all documents as to form. This action item is an activity related to COVID-19.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve by Womack.
And support?
Support by Wooden.
All right, moved and supported, and we'll take questions, comments, and discussion.
I see no hands raised in the chat.
All right, Pam, would you please call the roll to pass agenda item number five?
Sure. Commissioner Antor?
Yes.
Commissioner Breevy?
Yes.
Commissioner Bukowski? Commissioner Green?
Yes.
Commissioner Morgan?
Yes.
Commissioner Sparks?
Yes.
Commissioner Womack?
Yes.
Commissioner Wooden?
Yes.
Chair Jones?
Yes.
That motion passes.
Thank you. That brings us to item number six from Kent County Community Action. Jenny, would you please cover the action request?
Yes. The action requested is to recommend to the Board of Commissioners to accept and appropriate $15,199 in additional revenues from various sources to the Kent County Community Action Fund. That's $3,000 to the 2021 Senior Milage Program, $8,600 to the 2020-21 Interurban Transit Program, and $3,400 to the 2021 Grand Rapids Individual Circuit Breaker Program. The 2021 General Appropriation Act appropriated $207,000 for senior milage transportation. The contract with the Area Agency on Aging of West Michigan is for $207,969, which requires an additional appropriation of $969. The 2021 General Appropriation Act appropriated $48,336 for the Senior Milage Weatherization Program. The contract is for $50,557, which requires an additional appropriation of $2,021. KCCA recently sold a bus at auction and received proceeds in the amount of $5,150 to be used for the Interurban Transit Program requiring an appropriation. Board Resolution 9-10-20-87 appropriated $20,256 for the Rapids Interurban Transit Partnership Program. The contract for the program is $23,713, which requires an additional appropriation of $3,457. Also, KCCA received an unexpected donation from a private company in the amount of $3,402 to be used to assist clients with water arrearsages through the Grand Rapids Interindividual Circuit Breaker Program requiring an appropriation.
Is there a motion to approve? By Breevy? And support?
Support by Spark.
Okay, moved and supported, and we'll take questions, comments, and discussion.
I don't see any hands raised in the chat.
Hey, Pam, would you please call the roll to pass agenda item number six?
Sure. Commissioner Antor?
Yes.
Commissioner Breevy?
Yes.
Commissioner Bukowski? Commissioner Green?
Yes.
Commissioner Morgan?
Yes.
Commissioner Sparks? Commissioner Sparks?
Yes.
Commissioner Womack?
Yes.
Commissioner Wooden?
Yes.
Chair Jones?
Yes.
That motion passes.
That brings us to agenda item number seven from the Parks Department. Jenny, would you please review the action request?
The action requested is to recommend to the Board of Commissioners to accept the purchase of property for the expansion of Chief Hazy Cloud Park and authorize the board chair or designate to sign all necessary documents. In accordance with the acquisition plan for Chief Hazy Cloud Park, the Parks Department obtained a 2019 grant from the Michigan Department of Natural Resources Trust Fund to acquire property adjacent to the existing park property from Ada Holdings LLC. The Board of Commissioners approved the DNR Trust Fund project agreement on September 10th of last year for the purchase of the property. Recently, the terms and closing estimates for the acquisition were finalized with the purchase price of $1.92 million plus closing costs. Funding for the purchase includes $1.3 million from the DNR Trust Fund and $576,000 from Ada Holdings through the Kent County Parks Foundation. Purchase of this land is consistent with the goals of the 2019-2023 Kent County Parks, Parks, Trails, and Natural Areas Master Plan. The acquisition will add approximately 71 acres to the existing 315 acres for a combined total of 385. This includes an additional 0.53 miles of Grand River frontage. Corporate Counsel will review and approve the required documents as to form.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve? By Breevy?
Support by Green.
Support by Spark.
Okay, questions, comments, and discussion?
Commissioner Wooden has his hand up?
Yes, Commissioner Wooden.
Thank you, Chair. Just one real quick question. I know that the Parks Master Plan ranges from 2019 to 2023. The property acquisition plan that was referenced in the action request, how long has the, did the acquisition plan align with the master plan, or was that prior to? And when was that developed? I'm trying to remember.
The Parks Superintendent is with us. I think he could probably answer that.
Good morning. My recollection is they are aligned with each other. So we will, when we update the master plan, we also look at acquisition plans as well. So.
So the original acquisition plan was passed in 2019, or was it before?
Well, sometimes that, yeah, I guess the acquisition plan can look out longer than five years. But it will, what is inserted into the master plan would be for the next five years. So I'm not exactly sure on the timeline of the acquisition plans. I'd have to look into that for you.
Okay, no worries. Thank you very much.
Yep.
Anyone else, Pam?
No other hands are raised in the chat.
Would you please call the roll to pass agenda item number seven?
Sure. Commissioner Antor?
Yes.
Commissioner Breevy?
Yes.
Commissioner Bukowski? Commissioner Green?
Yes.
Commissioner Morgan?
Yes.
Commissioner Sparks?
Yes.
Commissioner Womack?
Yes.
Commissioner Wooden?
Yes.
Chair Jones?
Yes.
That motion passes.
Great. That brings us to item number eight, Commissioner Miscellaneous. Is there any Commissioner Miscellaneous this morning?
No hands are raised in the chat.
Jeff, are you still there?
Yes, I am.
We, we're getting close to kickoff, aren't we, for budget stuff?
Yes, it's getting pretty close. Capital will begin here shortly, yes.
Can we, what is the plan for CIP? And any, you know, we kind of, we've had some conversations about making that an improved process, maybe a little more Commissioner input. Can we chime in on that?
Sure, I don't have the schedule up in front of me, but from my memory, I believe the requests will be, the instructions are going to be updated with, to try to gain more detail from the department submitted in the requests. And then we were going to try to get those out to the Commissioners a little sooner and then have a work session, I believe it was on June 10th. Don't quote me exactly on that date because I don't have the calendar up, to try to get feedback earlier on, and so we can build that into the process of the CIP program.
Yep, it is June 10th. Yes, it is June 10th. You are correct.
Okay. So the initial objective scoring won't change because those are assigned points based upon the criteria. However, the subjective review by Commissioners will then be built into that process.
Thanks. And then I wanted to share for everyone, I believe Pam, you sent out the communication on the CAA work session. So after our next finance meeting, we will have a CAA work session. The first work session is going to be predominantly information exchange. You know, there's no decisions made at work sessions, they're all information. But it's also the next one after that, which is targeted for May 27th, has more opportunity for questions and answers, not that we won't have some also on the 4th, but there'll be a lot of information presented and reviewed on the 4th. So I wanted to encourage us and any members of the entire board to attend these two work sessions. And like I said, I know Pam sent out the communication, just thought during Miscellaneous, it was a good time to chime in. Do we have any other Commissioner Miscellaneous this morning? All right, not seeing any. We are adjourned. Our next meeting date is Tuesday, May 4th at 8:30 a.m.
I am Kent County.
I am Kent County.
I am Kent County.
We are 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 Kent County.
I'm Kent County.
Somos Kent County.
Mas era Kent County.
We are Kent County.
We are Kent County.
We are Kent County. Oh, yeah.